Well, good evening. I would like to call it an order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. On behalf of the School Board and the Superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the School Division. The COVID-19 pandemic has had an unprecedented effect on all of us. We have adapted to this new way of conducting business and the School Board has as well. Personal barriers are installed between the members of the Board and our visitors and staff are masked and socially distanced in the auditorium in compliance with the Governor's Order for School Board Property. During this evening's meeting, some of our participants will join us in person and others will join us virtually. We are taking these steps to ensure the health and well-being of our staff and the public. We value and appreciate your partnership. We will begin tonight's meeting with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Here to do the honors is Ms. Bethany Hafer, PTA President at Saunders Elementary School, and Ms. Lisa Berg, PTA Treasurer at Saunders, who will lead us in the pledge to the flag. Ms. Hafer.
Dr. Parker, members of the School Board and our Newport News community, thank you for attending tonight's meeting. As we begin to see the light at the end of the COVID tunnel of darkness, we cannot help but to be thankful that we are still standing strong. Through these difficult and challenging times, our objective has remained to provide a high-quality education for the children while never jeopardizing their health and safety. We are emerging from these challenging days both better and stronger than we were before, learning from the trials and tribulations we endured. It is through the tight bond of parents, educators, and students that we achieve success. But it is our enduring commitment, passion, and dedication that keeps us moving forward. We are thankful for this opportunity to gather in peace tonight. We are thankful for the good health and safety of each and every one who is here with us today. We are surrounded with supportive people who seek the best care and welfare for our children. May we continue to serve in excellence and seek positive results and decisions that are in the best interest of all our children. Please stand and join me for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hafer and Ms. Berg. The next item on tonight's agenda is School Board recognitions. Dr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we will move to the floor. We have several recognitions this evening, which Mrs. Price will acknowledge, and we'll start with the No Kids Hungry Virginia School Meals Heroes. Am I correct? Okay.
I have the honor of presenting this month's School Board recognitions. The 2021 No Kid Hungry Virginia Lunch Hero Program recognizes leaders who worked to provide meal service to students during the pandemic. Kathy Alexander, Executive Director of Child Nutrition Services and Wellness, earned this award in honor of her commitment to our students. Mrs. Alexander was unable to join us this evening, but she asked her leadership team to accept this award on her behalf. And again, this is the No Kid Hungry Virginia Lunch Hero Award. Please join us in congratulating Supervisor Debbie Pascal, Area Cafeteria Supervisor Christine Delgrasso, and Area Cafeteria Supervisor Christine LaMaster. This team, and accompanied by the entire Child Nutrition Services team, has worked tirelessly and creatively throughout the pandemic to make meals available to all students at schools and locations throughout our city. When we started the school year virtually this year, the Child Nutrition Services team stepped up to ensure that meal service could continue for all students. Since that time, the team has continued to ensure that students receive a healthy breakfast, snack, lunch, and supper. They began by serving meals at schools, and then they added mobile Meals-to-Go sites to ensure that families who didn't live near a neighborhood could still be served. In cooperation with transportation and school security, they serve thousands of students from our familiar yellow buses in seven neighborhoods throughout Newport News. The CNS leadership team has served families consistently and has maintained meal service during spring break, Thanksgiving, and winter break. Today, NMPS salutes the nearly 400 members of the Child Nutrition Services team who have dedicated themselves to ensure that our students do not go hungry during the pandemic. We're proud of the team, and we wish them congratulations on this honor, and we thank you for all that you do. Occupation Students Association Leadership Conference. HOSA is an international student organization that provides a unique program of leadership development, motivation, and recognition exclusively for students enrolled in health science education and biomedical science programs. Several weeks ago, our honorees participated in the state leadership conference virtually. This evening, we're proud to recognize five students in the Warwick High School Governor's Health Sciences Academy who earned top honors. Capturing first place in the biomedical debate, please join us in congratulating We I Am, We Em, We Em Amadi. We Em? Okay. Please also congratulate Erin Greathouse. And I believe Haley Miller was unable to join us tonight, but we'd like to congratulate her as well. And Penelope Sanchez Juarez. And notice they have their medals on this evening. This team was challenged to debate on the topic Designer Babies: Parents Should Be Allowed to Genetically Engineer Their Offspring, and they captured top honors, a first for Warwick High School. Our next honoree also performed well during this event, Gavin Mettala. Did I pronounce that correctly? Please, please help me. Gavin, give me your last name. Mettala, thank you. Gavin Mettala. Gavin earned a top placement in prepared speaking. Gavin's topic was Unlock Your Potential. These award-winning students before you are advancing to compete in the International HOSA Leadership Conference, and we wish them best wishes. We know that you will do Warwick High School and Newport News Public Schools very proud. While they're up here, we want to get their picture.
Against.
And while they're up here, I'd like to acknowledge the family members joining them tonight and their school administrators as well. Would you all please stand to be recognized? Thank you. And in the rear, we have, I think I saw Dr. Mason earlier, Ms. Amanda Snyder, Mr. Jason Holler, and their teacher, Dr. Marjorie Wallace. Thank you. organizations to the VSPA Business Honor Roll. With a number of outstanding partners helping our students in Newport News, it's always difficult to narrow the list to just three. To select the 2021 Business Honor Roll nominees, the School Board looked at organizations that have distinguished themselves in an extra-special way over this year or over the course of many years. Last year's honorees included Virginia Educators Credit Union, Ferguson, and the Food Bank of the Virginia Peninsula. This year's honorees are Bayport Credit Union, Life Enrichment Center, and Lifehouse Church. In addition to tonight's recognition, these businesses will receive a certificate of appreciation from the VSPA, which they'll receive this evening, and they'll be listed in the VSPA Business Honor Roll. Please join us in recognizing these outstanding partners. Bayport Credit Union, represented by Whitney Hendricks Youth Financial Educator. Bayport Credit Union offers Newport News students lessons in financial literacy and work-based learning opportunities exploring finance careers. The partnership also provides hands-on experiences, including work in the student-run credit unions, mentoring, summer programs, and volunteering. Bayport teams with Newport News Public Schools to offer financial services to students and their teachers at school. In addition, the program gives its student-staff a hands-on chance to learn marketable career skills in student-staff credit unions. Heritage, Demby, and Woodside High Schools have Bayport Credit Union sites, along with Crittenon, Dozier, and Heinz Middle Schools, and Carver, Kiln Creek, Lee Hall, and Saunders Elementary Schools. These activities support the objectives of a career and technical education course in personal finance and are an important part of the school system's efforts to prepare students who are college, career, and citizen-ready. In addition, Bayport regularly supports schools and programs through donations and sponsorships. Bayport's efforts have also been recognized by the Virginia Department of Education, which presented the 2020 Creating Excellent Business Partnership Award to Bayport Credit Union and Newport News Public Schools. Thank you and congratulations. Thank you for all you do. and Founder. Would you please come forward? The Life Enrichment Center is a Norfolk-based nonprofit organization whose mission is to enrich the lives of children, youth, and adults from underserved communities through various educational programs and initiatives. In pursuit of that goal, the LEC has established two technology literacy computer labs free of charge in Newport News Public Schools and is in the midst of creating a third. McIntosh Elementary School and Haydenwood Elementary School currently house a literacy lab, and Carver Elementary will be outfitted next. The program provides new computers, furniture, and decorations for the labs, trained tutors, and a paid site coordinator. Students reading below their grade level receive literacy-based computer lessons. Tutors are also matched with one student for the academic year. The tutors and coordinator are in the school one hour per week on a one-on-one basis with students, working with students on literacy. During the past year, tutoring was conducted online due to COVID restrictions. Tutors are volunteers who receive training and come from sponsoring companies and local law enforcement departments within the Newport News Sheriff Department, providing extensive support. So, thank you very much. We appreciate all that the Life Enrichment Center offers Newport News Public Schools students. And finally, Lifehouse Church Newport News, represented by Pastor John Ware and Community Coordinator Carrie Jones. Would you please come forward? When the COVID-19 pandemic hit, Lifehouse Church Newport News organized a campaign to make and buy protective face masks for students in Newport News. Through the For Our City program, Lifehouse Church rallied several organizations to join in the project, resulting in more than 22,000 face masks being provided to our students. That's just one example of the partnership projects that Lifehouse has organized for students and families in Newport News. After adopting Demby High School in 2016, church members provided pre-game meals and leadership mentoring to student athletes, with up to 100 students participating weekly at its peak. To support Demby High staff, Lifehouse renovated the teacher's lounge. The church also supported efforts to make schools more visually appealing with landscaping and outdoor cleanup projects at elementary, middle, and high schools. Members also organize an annual angel tree collections to provide gift baskets to our students. In a conservative estimate, Lifehouse members have volunteered more than 2,000 hours of service and $40,000 worth of donations to the NMPS community since 2016. Thank you very much for your contributions to our students and staff. As you're making your way up there, I'd also like to acknowledge co-pastor Kristen Ware, who's joining us, and co-community organizer, or co-community coordinator Julia Jones. To close us out, on behalf of Newport News Public Schools, thank you to the leadership and staff of Bayport Credit Union, Life Enrichment Center, and Lifehouse Church for your partnership services to our students and staff. And with that, this concludes this month's School Board recognitions. We will stand in recess for about five minutes. Thank you.
During a year of virtual instruction, adapting to changes in restrictions, and transitioning to a hybrid form of in-person learning, educators in Newport News Public Schools have been nothing short of spectacular. To honor our amazing teachers and wonderful support staff, social media has been jam-packed with photos and videos recognizing our educators' excellence in education. This time of year, schools select the Teachers of the Year, who will represent each site at the district level. A range of classroom teachers, instructional technology coaches, resource teachers, and professional school counselors have gone above and beyond this school year to ensure learning continues for all of their students. Without these dedicated and highly-trained educators working through the unpredictable circumstances of a global pandemic, the transition to virtual and hybrid learning would have been impossible. Schools are also celebrating their wonderful employees by selecting the School Support Staff of the Year. These professionals represent more than 5,000 devoted employees who serve and support our students, including front office staff, custodians, cafeteria workers, security officers, bus drivers, and instructional assistants. Many of these hard-working individuals shine behind the scenes and are essential for schools to provide a range of services and options to each and every student. Every year, elementary students enjoy a live performance by the Virginia Symphony Orchestra, but with current statewide restrictions limiting live concerts, this year's musical extravaganza became an interactive, virtual experience where the students played along. Music teachers at Discovery STEM Academy, Palmer, and Riverside Elementary Schools collaborated to create a fun and engaging online event for their 4th and 5th grade students, including newcomers enrolled in the English as a Second Language program at Palmer. For months, music teachers Jessica Backer, Mitzi Imbridge, and Christine Hood helped their students learn the Virginia Symphony selections by singing, dancing, and playing the recorder. On a Wednesday morning, students from all three schools were invited to an online Zoom meeting. The Virginia Symphony Orchestra produced and recorded a special virtual performance for students across the Commonwealth to enjoy. The professional musicians presented a range of musical styles, showcased the different sounds each instrument makes, and performed amazing musical and vocal selections. All the while, our elementary students were invited to sing along and play their recorders safely at home. It made the students feel like part of the orchestra, as they learned how much fun music can be when you're playing together, whether it's in a concert hall or online with your Mad Science of Hampton Roads inspired 5th graders at Carver Elementary to view science in a whole new way through a virtual field trip. With over 150 locations across 20 countries, Mad Science is the world leader in science education for children. And during this global pandemic, they've adjusted their engaging presentations to be viewed and enjoyed virtually. Using grant money, Carver Elementary invited Mad Science of Hampton Roads to spend the day reviewing important science topics with all of their 5th graders. For the 40 hybrid students learning in person at school, Mad Science offered an online, hands-on learning experience for them to enjoy in their classroom. Later in the day, Mad Science offered two online sessions for the 80 students learning virtually at home. Teachers even made time before the online sessions for their English language learners to review important vocabulary words. Using an inquiry-based discovery method, the Mad Science instructor explored themes of force and motion. 5th graders had covered these topics earlier in the school year, but with their science SOL test fast approaching, Mad Science was able to review and expand these topics in fun, new ways. Carver provided materials to every student so they could follow along in class or at home through hands-on STEM-based activities. This type of interaction made the science lessons come alive right before their eyes, fully preparing them for academic success and a lifelong love of learning. While NASA's ongoing perseverance to explore the planet Mars is making headlines, students at Crittenon Middle School are using their ingenuity to design a functional rover for their own mission to Mars. For the first time ever, Newport News Public Schools hosted a fully-virtual engineering design challenge for all three grade levels at Crittenon Middle School. Kevin Nellhugel, secondary STEM instructional specialist, worked with Crittenon's educators and instructional technology coaches to design and present an online challenge where students could use their STEM knowledge to solve real-world problems facing NASA engineers. During two separate Zoom meetings, students in Crittenon's STEM Magnet program had the chance to design, build, and test different components of a rover that could theoretically explore the red planet. 6th-grade students worked on the rover design, 7th graders built the parachute system to safely deliver the rover to Mars, and 8th-grade students designed a functioning robotic arm for the rover to collect samples. Students used Jamboard, an interactive whiteboard, to share ideas during a collaborative brainstorming session. They organized their plans using a digital design notebook through Canvas and submitted videos of their final build and testing trials through Flipgrid. If students got stuck on a problem or needed technical assistance, they could join a breakout room in the Zoom meeting where technology instructors quickly got them back on track. Volunteers from Jefferson Lab, Newport News Shipbuilding, and students from Virginia Tech offered their time and expertise to judge the middle schoolers' impressive work, with the top three winners at each grade receiving a 14-in-1 solar robot kit as their
We hope you enjoyed this month's School Board Spotlight. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the School Board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and also towards the end of the meeting. The School Board recognizes that during the pandemic, some members of the public may not be able to join us in person. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via a web form, email, or voicemail up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the Board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments first and foremost. Please understand that we will consider your concerns and get back to you at a later time. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on. A yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light indicates that your time is up and it's time for you to end your comments. As your name is called, please come forward. At this time, I believe I do have three cards. And the first card I have is Ms. Bertha Thompson and Lou Maynard.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Dr. Parker, and School Board members. My name is Bertha Thompson, and I am the Treasurer for the Newport News Council of PTAs. This lovely lady beside me is our President, Mrs. Lou Maynard. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be here this evening, as we would like to present the 2021 Scholarship Winners. You would give me a moment, I will call these young people forward, and we will present to them their $500 scholarship award, as well as a token of our appreciation for their hard efforts in school. May I have Ms. Haley Wagonfir forward, please? She attends Menchville High School, and she will be going to Christopher Newport University. Mr. Colby Miller is from Demby High School. However, he was not available to attend this evening, so his mother, Ms. Frances Miller, will be attending on his behalf to collect his scholarship, and he will be attending Our next awardee is Ms. Morgan Moore. She currently attends Heritage High School, and she has been accepted to and will attend North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University. Our fourth awardee was not aware that he had won, so I would like to ask Mr. Jordan Moody to come forward. Mr. Moody currently attends Woodside High School, and he will be going to Norfolk State I thank you again for this opportunity to present to our awardees. We're going to take a quick picture and we'll be out of your hair. Thank you so much.
I know that Morgan too. She's a former Dreamer. I see her at Homecoming. Morgan, the one that's going to North Carolina A&amp;T. Morgan, the one that's going to North Carolina A&amp;T.
And Catherine and Shelley.
Now I'm from here.
Thank you Newport News Council PTA. Our next speaker is Ms. Kim Anderson-Hasty.
Greetings, Dr. Parker, Chairman Brown, and the school board members. My name is Mrs. Anderson-Hasty. I'm the president of the NNEA, the Newport News Education Association. Allow me to introduce myself. I've been a member since 2012, and I participate on the Special Education Committee for the state, the Budget Committee for Newport News, the Policy Committee for Newport News, and many other professional development programs on weekends and weeknights to help provide knowledge to give to my members. I just wanted to let you know, as an advocate, I have been working with the administration for Newport News and Chairman Brown, and I just want to take this time to let everyone know that they have done a phenomenal job. And Mr. Wright, I'm here to let you know that myself and Dr. Melvin, the vice president, are the spokespeople for the NNEA. So if there are any issues or concerns, you can come to us. Our goal is to continue transparency and keep developing relationships at the table. We want to continue to work as partners, and I just want to let you know some things that we do as a union. As a union, we surveyed our members to see what their concerns and their issues are, and then we brought it back to administration. We keep our members informed via email, telephone calls, and word of mouth. We conduct monthly meetings, and we support our retirees of the NNEA. We also give self-care meetings, and we give lead building rep meetings, and we try to inform our members of their rights. We've had lawyers come in, we have representatives from the VEA, the Virginia Education Association, coming in to do collective bargaining. We're building relationships with the executive board team, and that is very important to us. So overall, what the NNEA, what we want to accomplish is to improve the learning of our students, their learning conditions, and to improve the working conditions for our employees, our educators, by bringing our professional expertise and ideas to the table. Again, I want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to me to just give this comment, these comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And we have one additional card, Ms. Pam Hall. While we wait for Ms. Hall to come forward, do we have any additional cards? The effects of social distancing. Greetings, Ms. Hall.
How y'all doing? I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Bass and to the school board for the signage up at Huntington Middle School, and I hope that this time, the city will follow through. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional cards? Are there any additional cards? There being no additional cards, and we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is Section 3, the Consent Agenda. That includes 3.01, minutes from the regular session on April 20, 2021, 3.02, minutes from the work session on April 20, 2021, 3.03, minutes from the joint meeting with City Council on April 27, 2021, 3.04, financial reports, including the revenue report, the expense report, and the Child Nutrition Services Report for April 2021, 3.05, the personnel report, 3.06, the VSB legislative proposal, 3.07, authorization of signature in absence of the superintendent. And so at this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harris, for the second. Now time for discussion. Ms. Ammon, do you have something you want to add?
I did just want to add something. Thank you, Chairman Brown. While I am fine with all the elements of the consent agenda, except for I wanted to just highlight the legislative proposal, I have concerns with it. What it does is it just recommends to the VSB to recommend or to propose for the legislature to allow all cities and counties, if they want to and it's voted in, to impose a 1% tax for school facilities. And just with the way Newport News has higher restaurant taxes than others surrounding localities, I'm concerned giving that latitude might lead to a greater tax burden on the community versus working with the city with existing revenues to get done what we need to get done. So I just wanted to express that I'm not in favor of that, but the rest of the consent agenda I am. So I'll be voting for it, but just wanted to express that exception.
Thank you, Ms. Ammon. Any other comments? All right, there being no further discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Bass?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our action items. Dr. Parker, yes.
We have one preliminary thing to do, Mr. Chairman, which is to acknowledge our appointees who were as part of the consent agenda. And always the funnest part of the day, it's always a pleasure to acknowledge individuals in our school division who are taking on bigger roles, larger roles and opportunities. And tonight, we have a few appointments that were recently approved through consent. I would first like to introduce Dr. Eleanor Blow as the new director of secondary school leadership. Dr. Blow began her career in Newport News Public Schools in 1996 as a CTE teacher. She has served Newport News in numerous roles through her 25-year career. In addition to teaching, Dr. Blow also served as a professional school counselor, instructional supervisor, assistant principal of instruction, and currently serves as the principal of Denby High School. Dr. Blow holds a bachelor's degree in accounting from Hampton University, a master's degree in community agency counseling from Hampton University, an education specialist degree in educational leadership and administration from the George Washington University, and holds a doctorate in educational leadership and policy studies from Virginia Tech. Her experiences have prepared her to take on this new role of supervising secondary principals in Newport News Public Schools. For the past six years, Dr. Blow has served as the leader of Denby High School. Denby has been fully accredited for all of those years and earned the 2020 Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award for increasing the SOL pass rate by 10 points for English language learners and special education students in mathematics and reading across three years. As the leader of one of the most diverse high schools in this city, with a proven record of student achievement, Dr. Blow is well-prepared to serve in a mentorship and supervisory role in secondary leadership. And tonight, we would like to thank her for her leadership at Denby and over the course of the pandemic, and welcome her to the Department of School Leadership. So thank you, Dr. Blow, for joining us this evening. We would be remiss if we didn't ask if you had any family members or friends, close ones who came this evening to share this moment with you.
I have my daughter Casey. My friend Nikki Jones.
Thank you as well, and congratulations. Looking forward to great things. I also would like to introduce, at this time, Kimberly Powell as the new supervisor of accounting. Ms. Powell has been employed with Newport News Public Schools for seven years and previously served as the accounting analyst in the accounting department. Prior to coming to Newport News Public Schools, Ms. Powell worked for the city of Newport News Finance Department in various roles, including grants accountant and accountant 1 and 2. She also served as the Newport News Employees Retirement Fund Board of Trustees. Ms. Powell has a bachelor's degree in accounting and a master's degree in public administration from Old Dominion University, and we'd like to thank you and welcome you in your new role. Congratulations. And did you bring anyone with you, Ms. Powell, that you'd like to introduce this evening who's supporting you? Well, thank you, congratulations. I'd like to introduce Kathryn Westfall, I think I pronounced that right, as the new employee supervisor of Human Resources. Ms. Westfall, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Westfall started with Newport News in 2019 as the employment coordinator for secondary instruction. Prior to joining the Newport News team, she served the city of Hampton as a human resources generalist. She also held human resources positions at, and I want to say this, M. Price Distributing, King's Mill Resorts, and university instructors. Ms. Westfall has a bachelor's degree in business administration from James Madison University. She has been active in the Junior League of Hampton Roads and the Hampton History Museum Foundation for many years. Ms. Westfall is proud to lead a strong human resources employment team, and we look forward to your leadership, and congratulations. And did you have anyone this evening you'd like who's supporting you this evening?
I do. I have my husband and my two children right here.
Thank you, and congratulations in your new role. Our next appointee is Ms. Sharita Holland, the new administrative assistant at Sedgfield Elementary School. Ms. Holland started her teaching career in Newport News Public Schools in 2012 and has served in the role of special education teacher, special education lead teacher, and most recently as a response to intervention specialist. Ms. Holland holds a bachelor's degree in business administration from Old Dominion University, a master's degree in early childhood education from Norfolk State University, and a postmaster certificate in educational leadership from George Washington University. Ms. Holland is excited to continue her work at Sedgfield in this new role. Congratulations, and thank you for taking on a big role. And Ms. Holland, do you have anyone to introduce with you this evening?
Yes, I have Amy, and I have my mom, Martha Singleton, and my stepfather, Paul Singleton.
Well, thank you for joining us. And congratulations. Another administrative assistant role, Ms. Tanisha Williams, the new administrative assistant at Carver Elementary School. Ms. Williams started her teaching career in Newport News Public Schools in 2004, and she served for 17 years in the classroom as a classroom teacher, a 21st century school coordinator, and as a member of the clinical faculty of Old Dominion University. Ms. Williams holds a bachelor's degree in governmental administration from Christopher Newport University, a master's degree in education from Regent University, and a master's from Regent, and Ms. Williams was named the 2021 Elementary Teacher of the Year for Newport News Public Schools. She is excited to start her administrative career at Carver Elementary. Congratulations, and well deserved. So Ms. Williams, do you have anyone with you this evening?
I do. I have my husband Demetrius, and I have Miss Ann Willis, and Miss Izzy Brown with me.
All right. Congratulations. Looking for great things from you guys. And our final appointee this evening is Heather Cobb, the new administrative assistant at Haydenwood Elementary School. Dr. Cobb started her teaching career in 2007 in Gastonia, North Carolina. After moving to the peninsula, Dr. Cobb worked in Hampton City Schools for a few years and then joined the Newport News team, the Wright team, in 2015. She left the classroom in 2019 to take on a role as a response to intervention specialist at Haydenwood Elementary School. And Dr. Cobb has a bachelor's degree in education from Western Michigan University, a master's degree in curriculum and instruction from Garner Webb University, an education specialist degree in educational administration from Liberty University, and a doctorate of education in educational leadership, also from Liberty University. Dr. Cobb is excited to begin her new career at Haydenwood in this current role, so thank you and congratulations. And would you introduce your guests this evening?
I have my youngest son Kayden and my oldest Sean.
Awesome. Well, congratulations. We're looking for great things from all of you. We always want to look at opportunities for advancement in our city, and we're just so glad to see this evening that so many of you are internally grown and you've been prepared, and we've prepared you well for these positions. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our appointees for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Now, that'll move us to Section 4 of our agenda, which is our action items for tonight. The first item is 4.01, which is the school renaming recommendations. Dr. Parker, I believe we have some recommendations that you'd like to review with the board.
No one wants to hear.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this evening we have, in terms of action items, the first item is 4.01, school renaming recommendations. The board received a formal presentation and recommendations at the April meeting, and this evening we are requesting the board's action on those items, consideration and action on those items.
All right. Board members, you do have copies of the motion in terms of the superintendent's recommendation in your board packets in front of you, and so at this time, we're going to take a motion to rename each school separately, and I'd like to first entertain a motion regarding the name for Epps Elementary School. So is there a motion for renaming Epps Elementary School?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to rename Epps Elementary School. Proceed with.
Mr. Chairman, I think for the record, you may want to have the name of the recommended name in the minutes.
There you go.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move to accept superintendent's recommendation for renaming Epps Elementary School to Stony Run Elementary.
All right. So we have a motion to rename Epps Elementary School to Stony Run Elementary. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second from Dr. Bass. Thank you. There's a first and second. Is there any discussion at this time? There being none, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Four.
Okay. Dr. Bass?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to Lee Hall Elementary School. Is there a motion to rename Lee Hall Elementary School?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for the renaming of Lee Hall Elementary to Katherine Johnson Elementary.
All right. There's a motion to rename Lee Hall to Katherine Johnson Elementary. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second from Mr. Ely. Thank you, Mr. Ely. Is there any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Bass?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to Nelson Elementary School. Is there a motion to rename Nelson Elementary School?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for the renaming of Nelson Elementary to Knollwood Meadows Elementary.
Thank you. There's a motion to rename Nelson Elementary to Knollwood Meadows Elementary. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Bass?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right. The last item in our school renaming is Dozier Middle School. Is there a motion to rename Dozier Middle School?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for the renaming of Dozier Middle School to Ella Fitzgerald Middle.
There's a motion to rename Dozier Middle School to Ella Fitzgerald Middle. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second from Dr. Bass. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Bass?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right. Thank you all. Now we'll move on to item 4.02, which is the Virginia Association of School and Superintendents, and there is a Superintendent of the Year resolution. And there is a Superintendent of the Year Resolution. Dr. Parker, would you like to read that resolution for us?
Let me turn to that resolution, sir. I did not have it pulled up. Let me see here, minutes. I apologize. Did not have it on my. Word Action. 4.01 and 4.02. That's 5.01. There we go. Yes, sir. This is the recognition of 133 Virginia Public School Division Superintendents as Superintendent of the Year for 2020, 2021. Whereas, in order to ensure the safe and the health and safety of all Virginians, schools across the Commonwealth closed from March, from March 13th, 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and most have provided virtual instruction since then as in-person teaching and learning evolved. And whereas individual school divisions retain the autonomy to decide where, whether or not new instruction would continue and the format in which the instruction would be presented. And whereas, stable and consistent leadership by local school division superintendents have been vital in serving children through the pandemic. And whereas, school division superintendents are responsible for the health, safety, welfare, and education of each child while creating school climates even within a pandemic that serve all children regardless of their circumstances. And whereas, public school division superintendents utilize guidance from the Center for Disease Control, Virginia Department of Health, Virginia Department of Education, local health departments, and local case data in fulfilling leadership responsibilities in their communities like no other time in their careers. And whereas, local school division superintendents work collaboratively with their school boards, educators, parents, and community stakeholders in providing technology, resources, curriculum content, emotional support, and meals to children during the pandemic. And whereas, traditionally, VAS Superintendent of the Year have been selected via a diverse panel of education associations after reviewing an individual superintendent's ability to demonstrate leadership for learning, communication, professionalism, and community involvement. And whereas, all 133 Virginia Public School Division Superintendents have extraordinarily exhibited these qualities while leading their school divisions and communities during the 2021 school year. And whereas, the VAS Board of Directors agreed on January 7th, 2021, to suspend the traditional selection of determining a single Superintendent of the Year and unanimously agreed to recognize and honor all Virginia Public School superintendents as Superintendent of the Year for the 2020, 2021 school year. And whereas, VAS is appreciative of the Virginia School Boards Association supporting this resolution and the honor provided to each division superintendent by having his or her respective school board present this resolution to the superintendent to be recognized within the community for which he or she serves and leads. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newport News School Board does hereby recognize me, Dr. George Parker III, as the Virginia Superintendent of the Year for 2020, 2021 as designated by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. And I thank you very much for that honor and privilege.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as read?
Second.
Or, Mr. Harris, you're approving the motion as read?
Yes.
Making a motion. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Second by Mr. Hunter. And now, time for discussion. Any discussion? Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Well, my discussion is that I'm sure that other superintendents in the state of Virginia are very much deserving of this resolution and opportunity, but I definitely know that ours is. So, Dr. Parker, thank you for your service during these unprecedented times. We really have leaned upon your leadership, and the things that are listed in that resolution are the things that we saw in your leadership in terms of leading our district, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Any further discussion? Well, I'll just say, as the Tidewater Regional Chair put on my VSBA hat, I did, I voted against this resolution at the VSBA level for school divisions because I wanted my superintendent to be the Superintendent of the Year and not to have to share the stage with any of the other 132 other superintendents. Because I believe that you are deserving of that, and so I wanted that, I want to say that on the record that I voted against it at the VSBA level. But now, being in front of us and the opportunity to honor you as a Superintendent of the Year, I'm going to vote for. I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this. All right. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mrs. Amon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. Now we'll move on to Section Five of our agenda, which is Reports and Information. 5.01 is our Return to Learn Update. So, Dr. Parker, I believe you have a presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, and again, thank you, Board, for that acknowledgement. But the work continues, and this evening we bring our monthly Return to Learn Update to the school board and community. And quite a bit has changed since our last meeting. So this, this presentation this evening, we feel is very informative for the community, and obviously we will be sending out updates regarding that, some of the governor's new orders that have come out, Order 72, which took effect last week, 79, which will take effect on May 28th. And some of those information tonight will address some of what we know right now. We also have changes in vaccinations. And we have launched our initial search for students for our Virtual Learning Academy. So we'll bring information to the board and the community tonight regarding those. We will start with some good news, which is, which was related, for the first time I've been able to say that this year, good news related to our community health metrics. I don't think I've said that in a sentence since, I don't think I've ever said that in a sentence. So, Mrs. Rousseau will start us off with going over some safety information and our community metrics as they, as they appeared the last few days. Mrs. Rousseau, are you with us?
I am here, Dr. Parker.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, and members of the board. I'd like to start this evening's Return to Learn Update with a look at two maps that I think depict the good news that Dr. Parker is referring to. Michelle? There we go. So if you look at the map, these maps show the progress that we've made across the state in reducing the transmission of COVID. The map on the right was January the 2nd of this year, and the map on the left is May the 8th, which is the latest date on the VDH site for school metrics. The key shows that high transmission is red, not where we wanted to be. Substantial transmission is orange, moderate transmission is yellow, and low transmission is blue. You can see that at the beginning of the year, January, the entire state nearly was red. And you can see that now, the state is largely in substantial transmission or moderate transmission with a couple of blue localities and still a few that are in the red zone, but a much better picture than we showed you in January. So things are certainly moving in the right direction. The next slide shows where we are in Newport News, certainly of most interest to us. These graphs focus on the progress that we've made in Newport News over the last ten days. The graph on the left is from the VDH's school metrics site. This data lags locality data a little bit. I can't explain why, but it does. May 8th, as I mentioned earlier, is the latest data that's on the school metrics website. You can also see that ten days ago, we were still in a substantial range of transmission at 66 cases per 100,000 persons and 6.9% positivity rate. But today, I pulled the latest data for the locality metrics, again from the VDH website, that shows where we are as of yesterday. You can see that we have now dropped down to 36.9 cases per 100,000 and 5.5% positivity rate. This is great news. We have made a significant pass, and that is we've dropped below 50 cases per 100,000, which is really important for a couple of reasons. And the next slide will show you the threshold rates, and then we'll talk a little bit about why that's so significant for us. But on the next slide, these, just to remind you, the thresholds of community transmission, where each of the levels start. So remember that high transmission, where we spent much of our first few months of the year, was over 100 cases per 100,000 persons. And then, you know, we've been in the orange zone for a bit, between 50 and 99. And now, we're in moderate, both for the number of cases, we're at 30, when did I say 36? I think yesterday it was 39, we're at 36. And we're at 5.5% positivity, which is also in the moderate transmission area. So, again, great news. And let's look at why that is an impact for us. So, first, one change is the physical distancing guidance. You remember that last month, I believe, we told you that we were able to lower the physical distance for elementary schools from six feet to three feet, even in substantial transmission. But now that we're in moderate, our secondary schools can also go to three feet of physical distancing. So, while that really isn't an issue right now with the number of students that we have in our secondary schools, as we plan for next year, it's certainly a welcome news. And perhaps we'll even have better news between now and then, who knows? I would certainly hope that we will. Perhaps, though, even of more impact is, is a change that we'll be able to make on sending students and staff and their close contacts home for isolation before quarantine. While our case rates are below 50,000 per 100,000 persons, as they are now, which we learned yesterday, we could begin this change, we learned from the Health Department yesterday, we will not need to require students or staff to exhibit COVID symptoms and have not had a known exposure to COVID, to be sent home for a 10-day isolation. We will send all children with symptoms to the COVID room and call their parents to pick them up. If the child resolves their symptoms over, and are fever-free for over 24 hours, they're able to return to school. Or if they're, if they visit their doctor and get a different diagnosis, they're also able to come back to school. Also of importance is that their close contacts, now, these are people who are presumed to have COVID because they exhibit symptoms but are not positive for COVID. Their close contacts will not have to quarantine. This has caused a lot of turmoil for our parents. We understand that. Our nurses have had to tell many parents bad news about their kids having to stay home for quarantine, and it's been difficult for families. We certainly understand that. That's the guidance that we've been given by the Health Department, and that's what we needed to do. But now, where we are with our COVID data, that will no longer be necessary. So we need to make sure that we do everything we can to stay below that 50 cases per 100,000. And then, for students and staff who do test positive for COVID, and we have had some even today that we learned of, they will still be required to isolate for 10 days. Their close contacts will have to, if they're fully vaccinated, will not have to quarantine. But if their close contacts have not been fully vaccinated, they will have to quarantine. Now, this has also been, vaccinations have been a big help for our staff who have chosen to be vaccinated. So many of our staff have been identified as close contacts, but because they were fully vaccinated, have not had to quarantine. So they've been able to stay at work. So that's been really good for them. And as, when I'm finished, Stephanie's going to talk with you about vaccination opportunities for our students. And something that parents may want to just consider is the impact that would have on their children being identified as close contacts as we go back to school in the fall. They wouldn't have to quarantine. So, anyway, that's excellent news. We do expect that this lower case rate is going to greatly ease our contact tracing and result in fewer folks missing school or work. So, again, if we go back to above 50 cases per 100,000, we'll need to revert back to the rules that we've been using previous to yesterday. We don't want to do that, so I'm hoping we'll move in this downward direction until COVID's kind of beaten back. So then, also want to look at the latest CDC guidance. So I've taken this straight from the CDC's website for you. This is their latest update, came out the end of last week. They are recommending that we continue to use the same mitigation strategies that we have in place for the remainder of this school year. Their basis for that is shown, very few students will be fully vaccinated before the end of this school year. Children under the age of 12 are not yet eligible, of course, for vaccination. And our youth that are between the ages of 12 and 15 just became eligible for the vaccination on May 12th, so just last week. And because people are not fully vaccinated until two weeks after their second dose, and the dose that's available to our youth is the Pfizer vaccine, which requires a three-week interval from the first to second shot, so it's going to take at least a five-week period for these kids to be fully vaccinated. And, you know, we're about that close to the end of the school year. So, CDC has said in recognition of that, we need to continue with our current mitigation strategies. They also note that schools need some time to adjust policies and practices to get in concert with the CDC guidance, as well as whatever state guidance. And Dr. Parker mentioned that Governor Northam put out executive orders 72 and 79. And in 72, he did require that students, teachers, staff, and visitors must wear a mask while on school property. The CDC does expect to issue additional guidance in the coming weeks, and we're certainly very anxious to see that as we begin to plan for our next school year. So just one more slide to remind you of what the prevention strategies are that we've been using. These are the same things that we now will continue to use. Universal and correct use of masks, it's been important, as well as physical distancing. And the CDC continues to say that those two strategies are the most important of the strategies. Handwashing and respiratory etiquette, of course, we've provided instruction and signs for our kids to make sure that they're continuing to do that, and we've had sanitation stations throughout the schools with hand sanitizer in classrooms. So we've tried to make that very doable and easy for kids to do, as well as staff. Our custodial staff has been doing a yamless job of cleaning our facilities. And our nursing staff, I just can't say enough about the job they've done on contact tracing. It's been difficult for them, as well as for our parents, and we understand that. I really do appreciate the work that they've done under the direction of Nancy Carlson, so appreciate their work. Not on this list, but another important part of our strategy, of course, is the self-assessment and health screening that we require each day for all of our students and staff before they report to school or work. We want everyone to continue to do that. We all have to do our part to make sure that we all stay safe. So, at this point, Stephanie Hott, our Director of HR, is going to give you an update on vaccinations. Stephanie?
Good evening. Usually I'm up here talking to you about vaccinations for our staff. Today, or this evening, we're actually going to change gears a little bit because we've done quite a bit in that area and have seen wonderful results, as Mary Lou talked about, with not having to have staff quarantine very often. So we're very pleased with that. It's time to talk about our students. And so, as many of you have heard, the Pfizer COVID vaccine has now been approved for administration to students ages 12 to 17. That is exciting news to allow us to start providing some options for our families in regard to vaccinating our students, especially in preparation for next school year. We are, as we did with our staff, partnering with the City of Newport News along with other organizations to really, to do two things, to try to provide as much information as we can to families about the availability of the vaccine for their children, as well as to facilitate the actual vaccination where we can in terms of making access available to, or having access for all of our families in the community in terms of vaccinating their children. We did send out a COVID vaccine interest survey to the families of our students ages 12 and above on Friday. This was not intended to try to set up appointments or anything like this. This was purely a way of trying to get some information or some feedback on the interest level that parents had and their comfort level. You know, what kinds of scenarios would they be comfortable with in terms of their students, or their children, rather, receiving the vaccine either on the property of Newport News Public Schools or possibly us helping with transportation to some vaccine clinics? And so, that survey was sent out to families who had, you know, children ages 12 or above. We're asking for them to complete that by this evening at midnight. It is a fast turnaround, and we do apologize for that, but we want to move as quickly as we can in terms of providing opportunities before school closes in June. I do want to say very clearly to everyone that there is no requirement whatsoever for any of our students. It certainly was not a requirement for our staff, and it will not be a requirement for our students in any way. It is a family decision as to whether or not students or children receive the vaccination that are eligible for. We're just going to try to help with the process. We will, after we get the survey results. We will, after we get the survey results tomorrow, immediately be working with our partners to put some plans together, some opportunities, and then to immediately start communicating that to our families. So that information will be coming out very quickly in the next couple of weeks because we truly would like to try to get as many of our students vaccinated who want to, or whose families want them to, before we close in June for the end of the school year. Because of course, with the Pfizer vaccine, that is a two-dose vaccine. And so we'll need to work through the summer for that second dose as well. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, as some of you may be aware, is the one-dose vaccine. At this point, it has not been approved for children yet. However, if it does become available, then certainly we'll explore that option as well in terms of availability. So if families would like to do just the one-dose, then that will be an option for them. Do you want to tell families that you don't have to wait for us? If you don't want to, if you want to take your children to go now and get your child vaccinated who's ages 12 and above, you can do that. And in fact, we've included the website here, as well as in multiple communications from the school division in terms of, this is the Virginia Department of Health website where you could actually go and search for vaccine clinics and actually make appointments immediately from this site. So we would encourage anyone who has made the decision that they want to do this, to go ahead and feel free to take your child yourself. Or of course, know that we're going to provide some opportunities to assist with that in the coming weeks. And that is what I have in terms of an update. And we'll provide more information as we go through the next five or six weeks.
Dr. Mang Lamot?
Dr. Mang Lamot?
I had a question.
Mr. Ely, yes.
Real quick, thank you for the presentation. With doing your vaccination setups, will it be throughout the entire school district?
Yes, sir. What our plan to do, and that's why we wanted some of the survey information, was to find out what the needs are. But what we imagine doing is to providing multiple options. For instance, there are mobile trucks, vaccine trucks. The fire department has one, as well as some other organizations. So we would be able to have that mobile vaccine clinic to actually go to the different school locations. And so if parents are able to do a consent form, and again, we're working on all those details, we can actually give it during the school days, like we do the flu shots now. We'll also have the availability to possibly transport students, again, who have parent consent to the Sherwood Vaccine Clinic in Demby, you know, and to help with the transportation piece that way, as well as then to try to work with our community partners to, you know, if a parent wants to take their child themselves, what are the options for evenings and weekends for them to be able to access that if they want to take their students? So yes, we're working with, that's why we're working with the city because they have very much an interest as well in making sure that we serve the needs of all of our community. And so we'll hit one end of town to the other.
And which way are we getting the math, getting this information out to the parents?
I'm sorry.
How are we getting this information out to the parents?
Well, Michelle Price will work with us, our community expert, communication expert, to make sure that we, we make sure that we, through our schools, through communication, through the website, through other venues, the city will assist us as well through their websites to assist us in any communication that we want to do as well.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, members of the board, Dr. Parker. It's great to be here this evening. I'm going to give you a quick update on the work that we've been doing for the past couple of weeks, actually, much longer than that, actually, on behalf of teaching and learning in our Department of Technology. I think it's really important for us, before we move into any real updates, is to take a moment to like give thanks and to celebrate that we are going back in fall of 2021, five days a week to in-person instruction. Yes, I mean, I think it's wonderful, and I think it's long overdue. We've waited 14 long months. I know our students are excited, our teachers are excited. But more importantly, I bet our parents are really excited, right? So next year for fall, though, we are still going to continue using our Canvas Learning Management System. And it's going to be a way to deliver content to our students instructionally, and we're going to have flexibility for our pre-K through 1 to not only use Canvas, but to use a technology tool that is more built for our early learners, and it's called Seesaw. So we're going to integrate both of those in our early childhood years. We are going to be employing throughout the division what's called a blended learning model. And it's really designed to provide our students pace, place, and time in their learning. And I'm going to talk about that in a second. But for all our teachers at home who are listening, I want us to all recognize that blended learning is not concurrent learning. So I don't want anyone to misinterpret what the two are. We are obviously, if families have questions and they have any concerns about going back to in-person instruction five days a week, we encourage them to reach out to their building principal to have a conversation about what it's going to look like in school, what our instructional model is going to look like. And they have until June 15th of this year to contact the principal and have that discussion. We will hold a Facebook Live session for all families on Wednesday, May 26th at 6:30 PM. So look for that, and we welcome, all encourage all of you to come to that. So having said that, we know that COVID has really provided us with a challenge, right? But it also has catapulted education into what we call the era of transformation. Or the era of educational transformation is what we're listening to in lots of articles and lots of journals out there. And because we're moving into this era, we know that we gave our students a lot of student agency and ownership of their learning this past year. And some were very successful, and some had a very, very difficult time with it. And so we know that technology is affording us this opportunity to really look at data and personalize instruction for every single student. And that's where our Canvas Learning Management System comes in. But there's also something called the Blended Learning Model, where you build in that Canvas support and other digital tools to deliver content to students. But the teacher is there in person with kids, facilitating that learning, activating knowledge, helping them apply their learning and make meaning of it. So again, reiterating, Blended Learning Model is not concurrent teaching. It is different. All teachers and students will be in the building in one location, right? In the classroom at their high school, you know how that works. The content delivery is through the LMS, but again, the teacher is facilitating learning. And this is where we give our students some element of control over the pace they're learning, how fast they want to learn it, do they want to slow down? Over the time in which they learn, am I going to, do I have to do it during math? Can I do it during science? And options like that. And of course, the place that, in which they're going to learn. An example of the model that we are going to employ, these are just two examples, there are many. But the Station Rotation Blended Learning Model is really what we want to really focus on in the K-12 space in Newport News. And you can see on the left-hand side, you rotate. So one group is offline doing a discussion, if you look on the left. And others are getting real-time feedback from their teacher. And another group is doing some offline collaborative project or challenge. And another group is doing personalized practice online video lesson. So it's just an example, and they rotate through with time. On the right, it's the same concept. We have some sort of offline drive inquiry. You're piquing their interest, you're doing a project, you're getting engaged. And then online, they're going in and they're getting the content from the computer, whether it's a video, a teacher videoed lesson, some sort of activity that is through, like you see K-12 or Explore Learning Gizmos. And then of course, offline, they extend and they apply their learning, giving the teacher a lot of flexibility in personalizing instruction and doing individual coaching because our students are no longer a whole group. They are now working on different tasks in small groups. And then teachers use the data from the LMS to then personalize and do that individual coaching. So we talked about blended learning, which is really the merger of what we're used to and what we all grew up with, and the fully online model. And blended learning is the merger of the two. But I wanted to take a second to let you know that that green space, that virtual space, we have some kids that are excelling. And because of that, we don't want to lose that student agency and that ownership of learning. We want to encourage them to take charge of their learning. And so we are developing the Newport News Virtual Learning Academy. And that is in collaboration with our teaching and learning team and with our technology team. So what is the Virtual Learning Academy? So it is a Newport News program. It is not a school, and I think that's really important to identify. It's a program that we have for our students that could be full-time or part-time options in an online learning environment. The full-time option means they don't step foot in the building. They're learning fully online. The part-time option is I'm taking one or two classes. It could be for enrichment. It's because maybe Menchfield doesn't offer something that Warwick does, but I'm a Menchfield student, so now I can take that course. There are lots of different reasons why students would want to take the part-time option. We are piloting this fall with all ninth through 12th graders, and we're giving priority to our 11th and 12th grade students. And the reason why we did that, we weren't sure of the numbers. But looking at our numbers now, we did kind of like a check yesterday. And it looks like we have only about 120-some kids who've applied so far. They still have time. And of those, it's equally distributed among all our high schools. And it's equally distributed among the grade levels. So it's interesting how that's coming out and really telling you that our students are really, you know, it's a wide spectrum of kids, and it's equitably distributed. We are coordinating our efforts through point option, but VLA students will still be enrolled in their assigned school. So I think that's important. We want to create a sense of community. So you're still a Warwick student, you're still a Heritage student, you're still a Menchfield student. But students are learning from home, but they can still partake in prom and graduation and football and, you know, cheerleading and all those clubs and activities that really create that sense of community. All courses will have a live teacher. And that's the key to a successful, fully online program. Every course has a live teacher. It is not a computer-go-through, click-through, multiple-choice questions and get-through it. It's not a computer-assisted program like that. But it's going to look different than the online world looked this year in the sense that there's no first period, there's no second period, there's no third period. Students truly have choice over when they learn, how fast they learn it, and where they're going to learn it. So there's a lot of asynchronous self-directed learning. But that teacher is utilizing data and pooling people in small groups, coaching them, maybe sometimes pooling whole group, maybe sometimes doing one-on-one. It's very personalized, very individualized. And it's important for all parents and students at home that are listening tonight that this is a year-long commitment, that you're not just saying you're going to give it a try for first quarter and then go back to your classroom second quarter. You're making a year-long commitment. But we are committed to our students' success. So if we have students that aren't succeeding, of course, we will meet with them and their parents, with our VLA administration. Of course, we will try to give them the things, the tools they need to be successful. And if that doesn't work, of course, they can go back to their homeschool. Also want to know that magnet and specialty programs are not eligible right now for full-time programs. That includes, you know, the New Horizons and our Dance and Arts Program and Achievable Dream Academy, that those are the things that right now we can't do a full-time program because it's such hands-on, it's specialty. And we're just not there yet. Remember, we're piloting our Virtual Learning Academy. The courses offered, we're doing our best to offer as much as we can. It was really hard for us to develop a program because we didn't know the numbers of students. We know we can do all core content, some CTE, world language, Spanish. All electives are offered as well. And what we can't offer through Newport News, we will supplement with Virtual Virginia. And Virtual Virginia, as you know, is our state online virtual learning program for the entire state. Just going back for a second too, you know, if you're interested in the full course available, it's online on the VLA website. There is a registration process. We are not doing a criteria like a magnet school. You don't need a 3.2 GPA. You don't need to have this sort of accomplishment or this kind of certificate. All we are asking for is you take the self-assessment. And the self-assessment guides students through whether or not they have the learner characteristics to be successful in an online program. They can get a certain score. If they get a score, they can automatically apply. If they get below a score, we ask them to speak with their parents and their school counselor and then make that decision together. Every student who applies, though, is going to meet with our school counselor. We really think it's important to say, why do you want to do this? You know, what, do you think you truly have the characteristics? You know, you realize you're learning at home? You know, just to go through all those things and make sure our students understand what this is about. Because taking seven courses, full-time online, is not necessarily easy. And we're really working to make this a rigorous, challenging program where we get to deeper learning. It's not just about glossing over proficiency in the content. It's really about digging more deeply because online learning gives you the flexibility to move the standards a lot more quickly than you would in an in-person environment. And because of that, you have a lot of wiggle room to sit there and build in really great, in-depth projects that get our kids really challenged and critically thinking about local problems, global problems, and all types of challenges that we want them to solve and apply their content cross-discipline. There will be part-time registrations. So if I'm a part-time student, I register right there at my school. If I'm a full-time student, it comes to the division. We look over their schedule and we try to meet the needs of the students. Deadlines, the window opened May 10th. It ends May 26th. June 16th is a deadline to request pandemic virtual learning. And July 15th, we have Virtual Virginia registration closes. We push the application window closing on May 26th because we do have to get students registered in Virtual Virginia if we have to supplement. And that supplement, we would have to get them registered before that deadline. Other good and great news, the last time we talked, we gave you some summer updates. We are having a summer institute for the arts. We're having mini-camps. We're really excited about that opportunity. It's for rising seventh through 11th graders or current seventh and 11th graders. And it's going to begin July 19th and end on August 5th. And it's going to be at Heinz Middle School. It's a full-day event. You can see it's 7:30 AM to 2:00 PM. And there is an application deadline, which exists June 10th, 2021. And you can go to the Newport News website to get that application. Other good news, I know that our band students have just been dying to get back into practice. And so we are resuming band camps July 26th through August 13th. It may vary by school, just by a little bit, but it's pretty much that, those are the timeframes. We are offering, we're going to do it safely. Every single wind instrument will have a bell cover. It's like a face cover. And then every student has to have a face cover as well. We're following all safety precautions that the CDC and VDOE recommend. Safe distancing, face covering, even for drum line, flag, all those events, color guard. No instruments or materials are to be shared. And all instruments and materials will be cleaned and disinfected. And we also have some other good news that we are happy to announce is that we are going to waive the instrument rental fees for 2021, 2022 school year for all of our middle school and high school students. So that's some good news there. And lastly, I just want to share with you that JROTC program is going to be up and running as well. You can see that our Navy JROTC Leadership Academy is going to be at Heritage and Warwick. They're doing virtual, but they're still having it. It's June 21st through the 24th. Our Air Force JROTC Leadership Academy is in-person, June 21st through the 24th and June 28th through the 29th. And our Army JROTC is not having any cadet camps this summer. They believe that they can get students caught up by fall. So that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions? Yes, Ms. Samson.
I do have some questions. Kind of two groups. The first one, because you mentioned students could be full-time or part-time virtually. Could you give maybe sort of a hypothetical, what a part-time virtual experience like schedule might look like? Would they go to school till like 12:00 and then they might have a class at home after?
It really will be designed by the school counselor and the student and what's available in the school. But an example, we've all done this. Part-time virtual learning has taken place in Newport News through Virtual Virginia for years now. So what students may choose to do is they're going to take English and U.S. Government online because they feel like they can learn that a little bit better than maybe calculus and physics. And they want to be in that, closer to a teacher for those content. So they may choose to take those in the morning. And they're going to be at home and they're going to come in late. And then they're going to take their physics, calculus, any other classes that they may have and then leave for the day is an example. Another example is I come in, I take AP Physics. I have second block off. I'm going to go to the media center. I'm going to go to designated area in my high school and I'm going to work online and work on, you know, whatever I choose to work on that day. It could be English, could be U.S. Government. Then I'm going to go to calculus and I go to lunch and then I may leave for the day. So the part-time option is really, really flexible. And we're trying to do that for our students and their individual needs. Some students may have to work. And so we're going to give them all in-person in the morning if we can. And then they have the flexibility to work in their part-time classes at night when they get off of work on the weekend. It just really is, it depends on the student and the schedule.
So would they be able to, in that case, watch the teacher-led part of it or the recorded part of it at a different time of day than maybe if it was live?
So, you know, you all know I've taught online for years. And I was a teacher in the classroom when I taught online, but I was also administrator, right, teaching online. And so my day wasn't consumed with being with my online kids. I could answer questions and do those types of things. So usually what happens is our students are self-directed. So I would record myself, you know, doing like a genetics problem. And then I would have a video for them to watch. And then I would have some like quick, like I would do a lot of quizzes that would do quick checks for me. I didn't count them, but they would grade them, immediate feedback for a student to see how well he's doing and a quick check for me to see how they're doing. Then based on that data, I may say, you know, Dr. Best and Mr. Harris, you're rocking it, you're good to go. I don't even need to meet with you. You're going to move on to the next activity. But Mrs. Searls Law, you know, you needn't meet with me. You know, and Mr. Brown, he not doing his work. So I'm going to be calling his mama and talking to him. So it really is truly personalized in that way. And that's what I enjoy most about virtual learning and being an online teacher was I really got to meet the students where they are. Every teacher that is applying for this option, they will have to go through an online methodology, blended online methodology course to ensure that they have the skill set. Again, it's a pilot and we're going to be doing ongoing professional learning with our teachers and giving them the skills they need to help them be successful, but to help them help their kids be successful.
Thank you. And I guess my other questions center around the blended learning. And I guess, you know, having had the more traditional learning style years and years ago, I was wondering if you could maybe explain a little bit more. I guess I'm concerned, you know, if it's all blended in sort of this round robin of stations, how that may impact kids, say, going on to college and being in lecture classes thereafter. And also I wanted to know what the feedback has been from teachers. I can imagine being a little concerned, having to track, say, 20 students' worth of levels and where they are in the different stations versus if I need to teach them these items in geometry, go up, put it up on the board so they can learn and then we can grow from there.
I have been across the United States and have seen blended learning models very, very successfully done. I've learned a lot from those models. And it's so different. Like, we know that all teachers have to put their content in the learning management system regardless. There's a snow day, school still goes on. If there's a hurricane and we're out of school for, you know, a week, school can still go on. So in order to make that happen, we have to get in the habit of putting our content online and posting announcements for our students to know what they have to accomplish. Then you come into my classroom and, you know, this is my biology classroom. And I'm going to have maybe station set up. Maybe I don't. Maybe I'm like, I want, you know, if you feel like you want to learn a little bit more on this content, I want you to open up your Chromebook and I want you to watch the video. For those students who are still working on their project, I have an area set up over here. Come over here and work together and collaborate on this. But I'm going to pull Mr. Ely up front with me and I'm going to call Mr. Harris and I'm going to go through a coaching kind of scenario to help them. So while we see a station-rotation model, it doesn't always have to be like that. The model is fluid and it's flexible. And the thing that I like most about it is it's not necessarily the same in every classroom. So you're right. Like, how do we prepare our kids for lecture if we're going to be doing this type of learning? Well, I may have a day where it's whole group. And we all know there is nothing wrong with a teacher-led instruction, right? We know that in today's day and age, our students kind of buck at that because they're so used to learning and getting their content knowledge from another source. They don't necessarily need the teacher for that. The teacher has to help them make meaning of what they're learning online. But there are times you have to do whole group. And so that teacher is really our designer. They're our architect, right? They're designing learning experiences for our students. And the learning management system is really helping you identify what students need help where. And that's where the LMS and technology supports you in that. And there's lots of different tools. It's not just the LMS. You know, there are a lot of different tools that we can utilize to support our teachers in getting immediate feedback, identifying where our kids are, and then pooling them as appropriate. There are also something called mastery pathways where I can, you know, have a student, like you can't go on in the learning management system until you master at a certain level in activity. Then you can go on. We're really excited about that. We're exploring it right now in Newport News. Our ITCs are taking lead on that. They're amazing. And they're digging in and what does this look like? And then we're going to give professional learning this summer on that.
Has the teacher feedback been good about as we're starting? Those that you've talked to in any focus groups or anything?
We're having listening tours coming up, so we haven't done that yet at all. But I will tell you, I was going to show it tonight, but it was an eight-minute-long video and I got to find a way to spruce it. But it's our teachers that are talking about even the concurrent learning model. And our teachers are amazing. And while they say this has been a challenge and it's been really hard, that they have really enjoyed the experience and what it's brought them. So at the next board meeting, I'll splice it a little bit so you don't have to sit through eight minutes of video. But we'll pull the pieces that we think are most profound and allow you to listen to our teachers. Our teachers are rock stars. They're dynamic and they are so, they're just, they can go with the flow. And blended learning isn't necessarily harder than what we've been doing in a high-tech classroom. So teachers who have been using technology in their classroom, this is kind of the same thing in a lot of respects. It's not that different. The reason why we couldn't do a fully blended learning model is we didn't have one-to-one technology. We didn't have Canvas learning management system. So if we would have had that, your rock stars would have been doing blended learning years ago. And we probably had some rock stars that were still doing it and finding ways to do it. So again, I don't think it's that different. I think they're just going to kind of go, I don't have to do concurrent, right? And I get to see my kids in person.
Yes, Dr. Best.
Thank you for that report. I have two questions. But first, just so happy to hear about the news for band and ROTC. And for any parents or students that are listening tonight, please take advantage of the free rental for your instruments. And if there were any students out there considering quitting, don't quit. Our bands need you and you can get band scholarships. So we need your support with the band and ROTC. So really happy to hear about that. For the students in the magnet schools and things like that for part-time, I did hear you say that they are eligible possibly to take a class or two, but they'll meet with their counselors and then they'll make a decision for that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then for summer school, do you have anything further in your report for summer school? Like, would there be any virtual summer school classes? Or is that in your report?
There will be secondary options for students and at the secondary level, options for virtual.
That's what I'm asking for, I'm sorry.
Absolutely, yes. But not for our elementary. We were really prescriptive and really identifying and targeting our elementary school students who are struggling in literacy. And we really felt the virtual model wasn't going to work for them. However, we are offering lots of opportunities, IXL. And we're going to have, on our website, we're going to have all these activities posted on June 1st for our families to choose what's going to work for them and how they can further enrich their students' learning throughout the summer. If they opt not to go to summer school, if they don't want to do a summer camp, we're going to have a plethora of activities for them to choose from. And at the secondary level, Dr. Jones was masterful. I don't know if she's still here, but she was masterful in thinking of how we can create a virtual option, but just still have teacher support on Tuesdays and Thursdays for those kids that are just working virtually in IXL on their own. But they will have a live teacher who will have office hours on Tuesday and 30 and can pull small groups and can call them, encourage them to keep going, do all those things that we know students need in order to kind of get them over the hump of learning on their own.
All right, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In fact, Mr. Chairman, I was on the fence with this blended learning thing when I first started hearing about it, you know? Because I was still thinking of the old perception of something being taken away from, you know, other students or teachers or whatever the case may be. But, you know, just looking at this program, it would have helped me when I was in the third and fourth and fifth and sixth grade because I wanted to do my work so fast so I had time to play, obviously. But teachers kept me busy and kept me out of trouble. But I see how this works. And because you're going to have that student, you know, that wants to come in and just get it done, but the teacher can keep them busy throughout the whole class period. And sitting in a class and, you know, you know, even though our teachers do a great job, but you have those students that attention span is like that. So I think this right here is perfect, you know? I think it'll cap to those kids that otherwise would have, you know, may stray or drift. So I think it's a pretty good program.
I think it'll help us catch our struggling learners earlier.
Correct.
Like, I think sometimes we wait too long and then they get further and further behind. It's like a hole and it's hard to dig out of that. So I think this model is really going to support that as well. We'll catch them when we need to catch them and get them caught up quickly.
Yes, Ms. Searls Law.
So I have a comment and a question. I'll go with the question so I don't forget that one. Since the students may be part-time or full-time, the counselor at this homeschool will follow them? Or will the administrators of the Virtual Learning Academy follow them?
That's a good question. So our teachers are our first defense. So even part-time or full-time, they are the ones who will communicate with our VLA administrators and the VLA school counselor and our advisor for the VLA to talk about this student is not being successful. We encourage, they're secondary. We want to create agency. You contact the student first. Student doesn't reply, you contact parents. Parents just can't get them motivated working. Then you pull an administration and the school counselor, and then you have a team meeting. And at that point, you're a partnership. It's a partnership between home, between the administrators and the students themselves to really get them back on track.
My comment is I am overjoyed to see this. Primarily because when my daughter was in school here in Newport News, she graduated last year, she took great use of Virtual Virginia. And it did do exactly what you're saying. And it really prepared her as an independent learner. And I could see where if that had been the case for, you know, offered to students earlier, it would do exactly what you're saying here is give them some individualized attention that a lot of times gets missed, you know, as they're moving along. So I'm very excited to hear of this opportunity for students.
We're excited too.
All right, other questions?
All right, so I'll just make one comment and a question of my own about the Summer Institute for the Arts. I'm really excited and I'm going to go home, going to tell my son about it. This was, you know, for my own son, this was his favorite program. And I know that there was, so hats off to the administration because I know that there was talk last board meeting. We didn't know if we would have the bandwidth to bring this in. And so I'm really very thankful that we were able to bring the Summer Institute for the Arts back. I know we missed, you know, one year. It's been an ongoing about 20 years it's been going on. We missed the one year during COVID, but we brought it back as soon as we could. And so I'm very excited about that. And Summer Institute for the Arts, I can say for my own child, it was, that was what, without that program, he would not have considered himself for a music major in college. So this was the program that really got his foot in the door and let him know that he could actually be successful as a music major and let him know what life would kind of be like as a music major. And what was offered there was AP, so that's my question, was offered there was AP Music Theory. And so that was the critical class that he was able to take at that point in time. And that's what really put him on the path towards what he decided wanted to be his career. And I think for a lot of other students, it's a similar, that's a similar fork in the road for them. So the question there is just, will we be able to at some point, either if not this summer, but in the near future, be able to bring that AP Music Theory back? Because that's really that critical piece for people who want to go into music.
So here is, well, you know, I don't know if Dr. Jones wants to say anything, but the beauty of virtual learning, you know, is the fact that we probably don't have it every high school because you don't have enough students taking it to justify a teacher. So now we have five high schools. The idea of making a class virtually becomes a lot greater. And then we can offer those types of opportunities for students when they would not normally have those opportunities. And they don't have to go full-time and they don't have to, they can, one class. I'm going to take AP Music Theory because that really motivates me and it's not offered at my school. So I think that we're really going to see students showing interest. And then how do we use virtual learning to make sure that we give our students the choices that they want in their courses? So as far as back in the school, Dr. Jones, I don't know if you know anything a little bit more deeply.
I think that when we fully come back, return for in-person instruction, we should be able to offer that AP during the year as well as through the institute.
Wonderful. Well, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll just close out a few remarks on the presentation. Just reiterating that to the public and easing the concerns of any parent, I want to clearly state that vaccinations will not restrict students from activities or enrollment in school. So if it's still a family's decision to whether their child is vaccinated, we encourage you to have your students vaccinated. I think Mrs. Rousseau made it very clear that when we have an incident where someone is symptomatic, people with vaccinations do not have to quarantine and we do not have further concerns in those areas. And there will be some lessening of restrictions down the line. And it will, some of it will tie in whether a person is vaccinated or not. So we want to still encourage vaccinations, but I want to make it very clear that students can still join sports teams, activities, enroll in school. There will not be restrictions based on vaccinations. One, don't wait on us for vaccinations. We, the city has plenty of locations. We actually are publicizing those locations on our website. And as we roll out our scheduled vaccination efforts, we will share that with families in the community. But if you can get your student, your child, 12- to 17-year-old vaccinated sooner, we encourage you to go ahead and do that and use local resources. The Virtual Learning Academy is offered for full or part-time students in the Virtual Learning Academy, but all of the students will be full-time. Okay, for ADEM purposes, I just want to make sure, make that clear that when hearing, well, I can go part-time next year. That is not the case. You have to enroll in school full-time. And you can supplement your in-person instruction with courses through the Virtual Learning Academy or Virtual Virginia. Or you can be a fully enrolled student in the Virtual Learning Academy. And I just want to make sure that as parents get, become familiar with the governor's orders, Order 72, which was released last week, that lightened restrictions for outside venues and mask-wearing and some social distancing. And then Order 79, which takes, which will be in place as of May 28th. I want to make it very clear that we were told by the state superintendent and VDOE that we should plan school for in-person instruction five days a week, okay? And knowing that there will be further governor's mandates, lesser restrictions possibly coming out over the summer. So we are still not scheduling or planning with the rules that will be in place once school starts. So we have to continue to plan for five days of instruction, in-person instruction, students learning in-person, knowing that we still need to see a few things fall in place at the CDC, VDH level for us to be able to accommodate, define what safety will look like in our buildings next year and mitigation strategies. We also need to see efforts move forward with vaccinating students under 12, 12-years of age. So a lot still needs to be in place. We want the parents to understand that flexibility will still need to be there over the summer as we continue to plan. But you have two deadlines in front of you. One is if you would like your child, your ninth through 12th grader enrolled in the Virtual Learning Academy or consider that deadline is coming up, May 26th. And you have until June 15th to speak to your school counselor or designate at your child's school if you are considering a pandemic virtual learning option for next year, for the first semester of next year, which would be, and that deadline is June 15th, to have that conversation with your school personnel. Okay? So, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'll conclude our remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. I believe that now takes us on to item 5.02, which is our 2021, 2022 federal funding applications.
Good evening, School Board Chairman, Mr. Brown, Vice Chair, Ms. Searls Law, School Board members, and Dr. Parker. The federal program team appreciates the opportunity to support the division's academic agenda by providing our school community's financial support that is echoed throughout and aligned with Journey 2025 strategic plan as well as Every Student Succeeds Act. The purpose of our dynamic federal programs team is to secure and manage federal grants and support equitable services for students and complement evidence-based programs currently offered in Newport News. for students and complement evidence-based programs currently offered in Newport News Public Schools. I will be sharing the federal funding plans and applications for our Title One, Part A, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, and a few supplementary grants at Federal Program Monitors. The grants will be for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. In addition, I will share the purpose of each grant, the four-year trend, and the itemization of funding for the new school year. The twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two grants were written using last year's allocation or what we call Level Funding. The federal program funding provides, um, provided is roughly eleven-point-three million for Title One, one-point-two million for Title Two, one-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand for Title Three, and roughly eighty, eight-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand for Title Four, which is a total of about thirteen and a half million dollars across the board. Title One Part A purpose is to improve basic programs for providing fair, equal, and sufficient opportunities to improve academic achievement in schools with the highest concentration of low-income families. And nine, in two thousand eighteen-nineteen, funds were reduced from the previous year by about four-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand. However, in the past three years, Title One Funds have been at or above Level Funding. Title One serves over eighty-three-hundred students in our pre-K centers and fourteen identified elementary schools. As mentioned earlier, the purpose of Title One Funding is to improve the academic achievements in schools with the highest concentration of low-income families. Additionally, support is provided in our fourteen identified elementary schools and pre, uh, pre-K centers to impact the quality of instruction provided to the Title One Schools. And this is accomplished through the skills of our interventionists. And they provide group or targeted instructional support in the areas of reading and mathematics to expand uh, student academic achievement. Another purpose for Title One is to provide instructional coaches. And they support and provide authentic learning and uh, initiatives and mathematics best practices. The coaches also collaborate and conduct professional development by modeling lessons with our teachers. Our school-based reading specialists implement a comprehensive literacy program and collaborate with teachers and administrators, analyze data on the school's literacy program, and provide feedback for the next steps with our school's administrators and school leadership teams. And this is all in order to provide continuous student growth. The specialists also assist students on one-on-one instruction as well as small group instruction with building uh, their literacy skills. Family engagement specialists serve as our key liaison between the student, family, and community. The team fosters an active partnership between the family and school communities by organizing both school and community-based programs and activities that support the school, family, community, as well as connecting agencies and resources for our family base um, as needed. Title One also supports the Newport News Pre-K Program in collaboration with the Virginia Preschool Initiative, VPI. Again, the Dynamic Federal Programs staff is supported by Title One Funding along with pre-K administrative positions, paraprofessional positions, and technology support. Each grant has miscellaneous expenses as well that help provide for mileage as our professionals go from building to building. Um, we also provide printing costs for materials, materials and supplies for so, a lot of our schools, as well as our indirect costs, that is um, a cost that we provide. Our second grant, which is our Title Two, Part A, the purpose of our Title Two Funding is to improve the quality of teaching and leadership through recruitment and professional development. The grant program provides supplementary funds in supporting effective instruction, improve teacher quality, and increase the number of properly licensed and endorsed teachers in our classrooms. The grant tends to fluctuate in funding with two years of decrease followed by an increase last year of roughly a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. And again, this past year, we lost about ninety-three thousand dollars, as you can see. Title Two Funds are utilized to support staff and students in grade K through twelve by providing division-level instructional coaches and specialists to support teachers in providing authentic literacy initiatives and mathematics best practices. The coaches also research, collaborate with school teams and administrators, and as well develop model lessons. Private schools are allocated a portion of these funds in the amount of sixty-two thousand and the, the funds are used to support their educational programs as well. The grant, Title Two Grant also has miscellaneous items uh, such as indirect costs and we also provide materials and supplies to support our professional development opportunities. Title Three Part A Grant supports our language instruction for English learners and immigrant youth. Funding is used to address English language proficiency and academic achievement of our English learners. The team follows the provision of language instruction, ed- educational programs, and activities that increase the knowledge and skill of teachers who serve L's. Title Three Funding also provides enhanced instructional opportunities for our immigrant youth. And over the past four years, Title Three Funding has increased or has remained at Level Funding. The funding supports family engagement specialists who focus on our English learner population. The engagement specialist is a key liaison between the students, family, and school community. The specialist conducts home visits, communicates, and provides an additional bridge between the families and the school community while providing connections to community agencies and resources to families as needed. The L Team is provided professional development through Virginia ESL Supervisor Association. And they attend the teacher, teaching English to speakers of other language conferences as well as the VDOE L's Academy. Funding is also used to provide materials and cultural experiences for our newcomers. Title Four Part A is the Student Support and Academic Enrichment Program. This grant is intended to improve students' academic achievement by providing students with access to well-rounded education, support the safe and healthy school conditions for student learning, and enhance the use of technology to improve the academic achievement and digital literacy of all students. The original funding uh, for allocation for Title Four was two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand. This was about four years ago. And as you can see, it has continuously increased. Under these three categories for Title Four, well-rounded, safe and healthy, and technology, funds are allocated as follow. For well-rounded, and this grant again is, is separated in three different categories. So for well-rounded, we are, we provide support uh, with a focus on secondary schools and English learning population as well as evidence-based instruction and STEM initiatives um, in support. Safe and healthy, the second portion of this grant provides professional development and materials and supplies for mentoring and wellness programs and professional development. There is also funding for technology support with professional development and technology materials. The value of reserve is provided to identified private schools to support their needs under well-rounded, safe and healthy, and technology. So for Title Two and for Title Four, there is a portion of those funds that go to our private schools. The Federal Programs Department also works with a few additional specialized grants such as the Virginia Preschool Initiative in conjunction with our First Step Pre-K Program. We also work with the Virginia Department of Education Office of School Quality to provide support and evidence-based instruction in reading and math to identified elementary and middle schools. Title One Part D is a sub-grant of Title One Part A that supports our Newport News Behavior Health Center Academy needs. In review, each grant is written to embrace and support Journey Twenty-Twenty-Five Strategies to engage in talents to develop student success, create environments for student and staff wellness, cultivate employee expertise, foster partnerships, and manage the stewardship of resources. Our next step is for the board approval for twenty-twenty-one to be submit, to, to allow us to submit the applications to the Virginia Department of Education in July twenty-twenty-one. And at this time, I will be more than happy to address any questions.
Are there any questions at this time? All right. Uh, no questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to, to item five point O three, our update from Achievable Dream.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Brown and Vice Chair Searls Law, Dr. Parker and all of our wonderful board members. I am Purvis Blake. I am the Vice President of Academics for and Achievable Dream Academies. Here with me today in the audience is our President and CEO, uh, Dr. Lee Reeland. And I also want to take just a brief second to give a huge shout-out to our two dynamic building principals. Uh, Ms. Tara Harris, um, at the Academy and Ms. Courtney Mumpoint at the Middle High School, um, aren't able to be with us here today, but we know they are here in spirit. So, we're gonna talk a little bit today about the partnership of Achievable Dream Newport News Public Schools. And as we put this uh, presentation together, we wanted to uh, figure out what will be the best title. And so we came up responding and partnering through the pandemic. Um, and so we're just gonna talk a little bit and recap our year a little bit. I know you all have been sitting for a while, so I'll be brief. We put together this brief uh, three-and-a-half-hour presentation and then we're gonna be done after that. So let's talk a little bit. Achievable Dream, here we are. Just to recap, and I know you're like, Mr. Blake, please. So, mission, vision, and core. It is our mission from day one um, to develop independent and productive citizens. That's what we do. What is our vision, really and truthfully? Again, we'll be almost where we, we, we will be thirty years in existence this summer in Newport News. It's to bring equity to education uh, by providing opportunities for success and in life. Uh, there you see some of our core values and you will see hopefully some of that that will come up through this presentation today as well. So, key program elements, first thing, first and foremost, uh, we used to, uh, pre-COVID, shake the hands of every single one of our students uh, when they came in the building. We didn't open the door and say, hey, y'all, have at it and go home after you're done. We, we greeted our students every single day. Many of you all, all of you all have participated in those morning handshakes and it's multiple reasons that we do that. Also, uh, we have the morning program and social rotations, which is our character education courses. Uh, we teach to the holistic child is what we do. We believe that um, when you graduate high school, there is no S O L of life. And so how do we prove that you're successful in life? And that is our goal and you'll see some of that today uh, as well. We have uniforms, we create the family of environment because we really are a family. Um, from Achievable Dream and all of our districts, we really are a family. We are extended day. We're considered a year-round school. We start in the summer. So our summer intercession is not remediator like you're staying in summer school. We are, that's where we start our years for our students. They are with their new teachers, they're learning their new teachers, the new culture, the new curriculum, and so forth. Um, and so, and then we have partnerships with the community, military, law enforcements, and everybody. Uh, affinity and beyond comes to see us. Since here, you see just a few pictures. This is Fort Eustis Soldiers. We have a partnership with Fort Eustis. They come in every single day, shake the hands, used to. Elbow bump and uh, foot taps now uh, with our elementary students. At the Middle and High School, we have the Sheriff's Department uh, with the middle school. In the high school, we have the Newport News Police Department. This is just a few snapshots of our morning banners. Every single morning, uh, they get together and say these uh, banners. Things like, I can go to college if I work hard. Achievable Dream blows me. I must learn to earn. Uh, I am somebody. We believe the more that they say it, the more that they believe that. And I know Dr. Best can probably say this in her sleep. She probably brought like, Mr. Blake, please go to the next slide. So, social rotations. This is our character education courses right here. Ethics and Conflict Resolution. And the one thing that I really want to point out here is as the pandemic came, uh, came along, um, and school districts were trying to find the curriculum to uh, address the social and echo, uh, emotional needs of the students, S E O learning. One thing that we are proud about is that Achievable Dream has always had that built into our curriculum. And here you just see some of the things, mindfulness and meditation, uh, STEM, speaking green, etiquette, ethics and peaceful conflict resolution. We call it doing the right thing when no one is looking. And so we had that already built in. It was just now how to maintain uh, those things. Cradle to College, one of our, 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 another proud moment for us. Uh, we have a program which is called the Literate Dreamers. And this is really based off, we took a trip, uh, Dr. Reeland paid for, a lot of us to go up to Harlem Children's Zone in New York. And we, we saw a lot of the aspects that they had in the program, which really mirrored uh, what we do here uh, in Newport News with Achievable Dream. And so they had an aspect called Baby College. And what, what we did was to build on to that. And Literate Dreamers is for expected parents up to age three. And it doesn't have to be a member or family member of it. Achievable Dream is community-wide. Um, and we, what we do, we, they'll come in and we teach courses like early childhood literacy, effective discipline. Uh, and we also teach, um, uh, this, this time we had bilingual, so we taught Spanish as well. And we did it, we were able to do it. We had to take a break, of course, for COVID for in-person, but at Achievable Dream, you know, we're just, we just can't sit still. We don't do average at Achievable Dream. And so we found a way to do it virtually. And this, this um, past Literate Dreamer session, we had as far as Florida, families as far as Florida that was joining us as well. So, here you see my baby picture. Um, this was a little bit, I'm just kidding. But this is uh, an Achievable Dream, the Literate Dreamer Program. And again, it's just for us to build a cohort of families for a support system to give them their tools. Because as we all know in education, those brains are sponges in those early years. And so how can we get them prepared to come to school in, in first grade, uh, first grade, and kindergarten? Um, and, and give them the necessary tools that parents has to do. And we provide gifts. We have baby gates and socket plugs and uh, temperature, uh, thermometers, bathtub thermometers, and so forth that we give them. Dream to Career, this is on the opposite end now. Now we're talking about our alumni that have now graduated or in college or going into the workforce or military. We have a portal now. We have a um, Director of Alumni Services that works specifically, specifically, I promise I can talk, with our alumni. And so they don't leave us. Even if we want them to, they don't leave us. They always call back there and they're coming for us, uh, come to us, how can, how can we help you? And so again, Achievable Dream, we have about eight hundred or so alumni now since our first graduating class. And we can tell you what, where about ninety-five percent of those students are because we keep in contact with them. Um, again, making sure that they are successful in life, but also proven and make sure that we are doing as what we say we are doing as an organization. Here's a little bit of our program results. And you look at these first set of bullets and, and that was from class of twenty-twenty. Our first graduating class with the school, within the school model is from twenty-twenty-one. And there you see ninety to ninety-five percent, uh, students attend four-year, five-to-eight trade school, three-to-five military, and one to two percent join the workforce. Social justice. Let's talk a little bit about that. And so we, at Achievable Dream, as I stated earlier, we just don't do average. And so we saw the things that were going on, not just um, globally, not just nationally, but here in our own communities. And we couldn't stand by. We, we do not want to exist. We have a saying, we do not want to exist within four walls on the city block. We want to make sure that we are impacting the community that we're in first and then our, um, our whole district and then ripple effect out as much as we can. And so we developed a Dreamers for Change Task Force. And I proudly announce we have representatives on that task force, not only from Achievable Dream, but from Newport News Public Schools. We have Dr. Shamika Jaro, uh, Ms. Courtney Mumpoint, and one of our lead, math lead teacher, uh, Mr. Jonathan Lister. But we also have um, corporation owners uh, that are there from this, from Newport News. Uh, Bray King is on. Um, a representative from U.S. Foods is on. Uh, Chief Jew from the Police Department is on. And we really want to make sure that we're doing our part to push the needle forward um, with diversity, equity, and inclusion. So Dreamers for Change, and I'm gonna change that slide uh, before I go on a rant about just how important that is for us, um, and that the work that we are doing here. So, you asked the question, what's So, you asked the question, responses and changes during COVID, thank you for asking that question. Here it is. It caused us to really change as all of us, our operation strategies. How do we maintain what we are doing to make sure our students are successful? So day one, even before March thirteenth, that day, that Friday, we came together as an organization in partnership with schools, and we went, those U-hauls you see there, we went in all of our districts, in Newport News, Virginia Beach, and Henrico County, we filled up and packed those U-hauls. And I think that's why my back still hurts, because we loaded up those U-hauls, and we went and provided two weeks of food for all of our families to make sure that they knew, because at the time, we knew that they were going to be just two weeks that they were home. And not only that, it was important for us, again, as we said, with systemic impact. And so we reached out to Dr. Parker and said, we have some additional resources, can we please, is there another school? And so he said, absolutely, we appreciate the help, Newsom Park. And so we were able to provide fifty families at Newsom Park Elementary as well with two weeks of food as well, again, that systemic impact. All right, and so, uh-oh, did I hit something wrong? All right, so transitioning, here we are, we're transitioning again. We're going back to social rotations, we talked about that, and so we're going back to live social rotation, I think I skipped something. Is my clicker? Yes, please, I think my clicker isn't working. All right, there we are, so alumni and student support, this is our student from graduating class from last year. Again, there was a trying year for them, a graduation year for them, and so we did not want to leave them on their own. And so we, again, our Director of Alumni Services worked for them, worked for our alumni, kept in contact with them, made phone calls, as we did with all of our families, each and every student, we made phone calls with them once a month, just to check in, to see where they are as well. Okay. Now, let's talk a little bit about transitioning as we're coming back to it, and really, truthfully, the social rotations we are still doing, we're doing those virtually, as well as in-person for those, so those are the things like the etiquette, the speaking green, the mindfulness and meditation and so forth. It was important for us to make sure that we maintain those, both for our in-person students and our virtual students. Also, we have grants that we were able to come to receive that allowed us to purchase STEM materials, and so we have things like the robots and 3D printers and so forth, to make sure that we're at the cutting edge of that as well. Virtual Saturday School, as I talked about a little earlier, we are extended days, extended school year, Saturday School is also something that we continue to do. We did that virtual, and we had attendance numbers for eighty-five to ninety percent. But another good thing about doing Saturday School virtual is that we were able to now have a cross-campus science fair. And so our fifth graders from Newport News, along with our fifth graders from Virginia Beach, and our fifth graders from Henrico County, were all able to come together as a family and put on a friendly science competition as well. Virtual field trips are a must, I mean, for us, exposure is important. And so we made sure that they still had those opportunities virtually to visit places as far as China, and to date, in Newport News, we've gone on almost sixty virtual field trips. And lastly, on this slide, our corporate partners are major for us, what it takes is our job readiness program. And so we have partners with Newport News Shipbuilding, and Ferguson Enterprises, and W.M. Jordan, and so many other places that come in, and they still did our what it takes sessions once a week, even though they were all going through their own kind of adjustment, they, they, they knew it was important for them to be in front of our students. And so once a week, they still came virtually and talked to our students, making that connection from school to the work field and to life. So we talked about the students, what about the staff of Achievable Dream? And so here you see just a screenshot of something we call Dreamer Dialogue, and weekly we got together and talked as a team. We led these Dreamer Dialogue Sessions, we talked to things, about things like mental health, we also talked about taking a break, backing away from the computer sometimes, and when you're off, sometimes saying you're off and getting that mental reset. Please don't tell Dr. Reeland I said that, but still, it is important to get that, that mental break, but I say that, but she was one major instrumental in this part of making sure that her staff were well-rested, because as she said, if you're not a hundred percent, you can't give anyone else a hundred percent. So that was major for us, for team building as well. So, finally, what, 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 what got us through? What, as Achievable Dream, not only family, because we believe, but relationships drive the results, but what, what, what got us through? And so the first thing we understood was we had to be flexible, you know, no one knew what was to come, you know, no one knew how to navigate this, and those that did probably passed away from the last one, because they, that was nineteen eighteen or something, so. But then secondly, it's big for us, you know, you hear the terms, think outside of the box, but for us, we like to just, you know, I love kickball, so we just kick that box out, out in the street. Got rid of the box, because we didn't want to be boxing at all, and so we just tried to find new methods and new ways to engage our students and families, positivity, I can't say enough about that. And then also, considering the individual situations now, you know, we will always use cliche when you go to people and just stand and greet, how are you doing? And you know, we, they'll say, I'm doing fine, if they say anything else, we keep walking, sometimes we really don't want to listen. But now in the pandemic, you say, how are you doing, and you really want to know. You really want to know, how are you? How are you doing? Talk to me, let me really listen to you, because now it is, it is very important. And so the main thing that drove us is really this last bullet as I end. For us, how do you want to be remembered in the pandemic? That was major for us, because believe it or not, we are a part of history. So it was up to us to make our, our mark in history and how we want to be remembered as an organization and as a partnership with Newport News Public School. And throughout this presentation, I say "we" a lot, but I do want to say, when I say "we," I don't say "we" as an Achievable Dream Incorporated, I say "we" as an Achievable Dream, I say "we" as Dr. Parker and his staff, I say "we" as Chairman Brown and you all, I say "we" as Chief Drew in the Police Department, I say "we" as Gabe Morgan in the Sheriff's Department, and so many others, because it really is a community effort as well. And the last thing I would just mention is, our schools were able to be vaccination spots, and Dr. Parker was very integral, along with partnership with Riverside Health Services, to make, have vaccinations in our elementary and middle schools, and we were able to vaccinate twenty-seven hundred people in the southeast community, because it was our goal as an organization and as a family connected, to make sure we get the vaccination to those that need it the most and might not be able to get there. So, so Mr. Ely, thank you for your hand in the vaccinations, for your donations and your time, and Dr. Best as well, for, you know, helping with the registrations and referrals and so forth. So just, again, that's my time, so I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity for sharing Achievable Dream, I could talk about it all night, but I know you'll have some other things to do. Any other, any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ely.
Just a quick comment, I just want to say thank you to you and Achievable Dream and your staff. Lee, y'all did an excellent job with getting citizens in the East End community vaccinated. I don't know if it would have been done if y'all didn't step up to the leadership to make that happen. And Dr. Parker, thank you again for making that happen, great partnership. I got so many phone calls and emails, and so many younger people, my generation, wanted to get vaccinated, so everybody became care tech, because I'm saying, look, I want you vaccinated, I want you to be safe, and because of so many people in my generation who wanted to get vaccinated, they have been on the forefront, saying, hey, I'm here, I'm normal, I'm still alive, get vaccinated. So a lot of my friends now, you know, I'm, that's in their twenties or thirties, they're stuffing up to the plate to get vaccinated, because there's so much misleading information out there where, when you see people like me and the rest of the school board members and other young millennials get vaccinated, it makes it like, okay, they stay here, let's get it too. So I just want to say thank you, Lee, again, and your staff for making sure it happened in the East End community, and thank Riverside as well, because if it wasn't for you all, I don't know if it would have been available to so many seniors and so many people who really needed that, take advantage of that great opportunity. Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah, so other questions or comments? All right, well, I'll just make a, make a comment and one question in regards to, thank you all for coming tonight, this was one of the things when Dr. Parker sat, you know, I sat down back in July, we were intentional about, let's see, let's spend some more time with our community partners, in particular Achievable Dream, and get them to come in and talk with us, so this is a fulfillment of our year-long plan in terms of getting our community partners here with us, and so we appreciate you all coming and presenting tonight. And then just the question is in regards to, we look at the graduation rates being what they are and the results that you're able to achieve, how many more students could we expand this opportunity to? So given that we see this kind of success, could we, you know, double the number of students or increase by, you know, any kind of a measure?
Absolutely, yes, that's a, that's a great question, and we get that a lot. You know, in all of our districts, and so with our, our school model, based on our in-person, and within our schools, we are available up to a certain amount of slots, because we have donors that donate to the program and so forth, and graduating class in space, and so we are, we are limited now in Newport News, we have about, our incoming sixth rate, I would say, we have about a hundred or so students that we accept, and for, through attrition rate, and that's kind of the last time where we accept our students. And so we are about where we are as far as capacity, every year we recruit our students, we're on a waiting list for all of our grades, and we start at the same time, about January timeframe as far as recruitment and so forth, so we're on a waiting list now just based on size, and so we, we won't expand a lot as far as in the building. The good, one of the good parts of the pandemic is that pandemic, if there was, is that we are able to develop a program called Achieve Same Pro, and it's an extension of an Achievable Dream, but now it's a different model, and so, for example, if a school or a district wants to implement the characteristics of an Achievable Dream without having the full model, they can do so, and we are part of that, and so that you can implement those characteristics and aspects of Achievable Dream within the school without having to take on all of the aspects, and so we're proud of that. And so that is probably the way that we'll be able to expand to do more as well. That was a shameless plug, I'm sorry, but, but no, in all seriousness, we, we saw that, we got that question a lot, and so we, again, with us not wanting to be average, we wanted to, how can we impact more? How can we do more, not just with the students that we have, the twelve fifty in Newport News that we have, but to others and have that same aspect? And so it was just on us, you know, and we got together, and we formed Achieve Same Pro, to be able to get all of those aspects of Achievable Dream, so they have those same characteristics in social, academic, and moral learning as well. And so right now, that's the impact that we will kind of move as we move forward, because again, we are limited in space within our buildings.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to our item five point oh four, the attendance report, five point oh five, the membership report, and five point oh six, the construction report. Board members, you've received copies of these reports in your packets, are there any questions for Dr. Parker at this time? All right, hearing none, then we will move on to five point oh seven, comments by the superintendent, Dr. Parker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we, as we round, and I'll stick to the script tonight, but I want to first say, thank you, board members, so much for the honor of being named one of the VAS Superintendents of the Year. I humbly accept the honor, but also, also understand the commitment that our staff had to make this year, many, many personal sacrifices as well as professional, to make sure that our students were served adequately. So I would also say I honor them this evening as well, our teachers in the classrooms, our custodians, our transportation supports, and all of our administrators, individuals who have really given a lot this year to make sure that we stayed ahead of the curve in terms of serving our students. So as we round out this school year, we are very excited about our upcoming graduations and celebrations. Additionally, we are excited about our plans for the Summer Spark Program and the launch of our virtual academy. In the fall, and you may, some of you may not remember this, I stated that while we are dealing with the day-to-day challenges of a pandemic, with every challenge that we face, eventually there will be an opportunity. This evening, it's my hope that our board and our community understand that it is now time for us to move forward with many of the opportunities that are being presented before us. We are now fully, fully functioning and sustainable, one device per student, School Division. While we've overcome the challenges that forced us to accelerate this goal, the opportunity is now to continue to look at innovative ways to leverage our technology, to maximize student opportunities for, for learning. And I think Dr. Mang Lamott gave you a very good idea of how you would leverage technology in the classroom with the blended learning model. The Virtual Learning Academy is also another example of how we're planning to do this. And I remind you, our community, the VLA, Virtual Learning Applications are available in Student View, and the deadline to apply is Wednesday, May twenty-sixth. I'd like to put a few congratulations out there, congratulations to Demby High School's Aviation Academy for being included in Virginia Living Magazine's twenty-twenty-one List of the Top Schools in the State. This, the article referenced a team of students at the Aviation Academy who participated in HUNCH, High School Students United with NASA to create hardware, to build special lockers used on the International Space Station. Only one school in the U.S. took part in that program, and we, and we have that, that school. So May is also National Mental Health Awareness Month and Better Hearing and Speech Month. So I want to acknowledge our licensed clinical social workers and student support specialists for supporting the social emotional needs of our students, and our hearing impaired teachers and speech language pathologists for supporting our students with hearing and communication disabilities. Newport News Public Schools has a wide range of resources to support and advance students, and I thank all of our dedicated student advancement staff who serve our students. This is also National Education Bosses Week, we celebrate the dedicated work of our academic and support leadership teams across the division, and thank you for your vision, commitment, and service leadership. What you do every day makes a difference in our school community. So in closing, next week, our staff and I will host a Facebook Live session for interested families on the opening of school in the fall. This will be a good opportunity to have some of your questions answered, and I encourage families to join us on Wednesday, May twenty-sixth at six-thirty on the Newport News Public Schools Facebook page. Families can also watch on NMPS TV. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Dr. Parker. So now we'll move on to item six, which is another opportunity to hear from the public, are there any cards at this time? All right, there being no cards, then we will stand adjourned, happy graduation, everyone.